This conference will now be recorded.
Clerk, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Here.
All right, tonight we have a presentation by Mr. Brian Cast. He will present the vending presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council and citizens. So if everyone recalls, when we updated the vendor code, which is, let's go to chapter 5.40, around a year ago, we allowed a provision for the city to be able to designate areas of city-owned property where vending is allowed. We currently don't have any identified areas for vending, and so that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, are some possible locations that the Council could choose to locate vending on. We have also received, since that code has gotten into place, I would say, few to several inquiries about where vending may be allowed. And so based on that, staff have come up with some areas that may work for vending that we'll talk about, and then at the end, we'll open up discussion for feedback on those areas, or if Council has any other ideas of areas that we should explore. So, I think we can skip back around here. So the first potential area that could potentially could work as a vending area is the City Hall parking lot here out front. The concept there that staff's come up with is you could have a farmer's market there, or other vending, like on weekends. Obviously, that's the main public parking for the building during the day, so probably wouldn't want to necessarily hold vending there during business hours or on weekdays, but parking lot's pretty well vacant in the evenings. There's also, you know, attached parking both on this side of the building and down here for patrons, as well as at the new, or at the former City Hall building. We could potentially work with the tenant that's going to be moving in there to allow parking off business hours, because they're going to just have administrative staff there, from what we understand. Next slide. Another potential area, and one that has historically been used for vending, is the gravel area next to the bridge. If you recall, there was some previous concerns about safety along that stretch, as well as sort of unrestricted ingress and egress along that sort of wide area. Is one way to address that potential concern, since that conversation, the speed limit's been lowered, much to the mayor's displeasures, from 50 down to 35 down the hill there. And if you also recall, when we did the Fourth Street, La Center Road, excuse me, overlay project, staff looked at potential to add some barriers to sort of limit at least to two spots where people can enter and leave that area to reduce the central conflict points. The cost for that was around $60,000. However, about $12,000 of that cost were some candles in the center median to prevent left turns into there. So, you know, there's some potential ways we could revise that design and lower that cost. Or, you know, we, I don't think that there's a high accident history there. I think maybe there's one accident that we could find in the last, you know, recorded history, basically, of accidents. So, you know, it's another option, maybe to, you know, to consider vending in that area and sort of see how, see how it goes. Next slide, please. A third area that staff has considered, and this would pertain specifically to water sports sort of activity. We had a gentleman reach out about potentially renting some paddleboard rentals at one of our lot waterfront parks. And so, this Pollock Park area where is where our non-motorized boat launch is, there's a parking lot there. You can see, you know, access is a little bit challenging. You kind of have to take the long winding road to get down there. So it's, maybe it wouldn't be the best location for, you know, a farmer's market or something like that, because it's sort of hard to, it's easy to see, but it's hard to get to, if that makes sense. But for something like water sport activities, it might make good sense. And in consultation with the city attorney, he seemed to indicate that we could designate an area like this for a specific type of vending. I think, as a side note, the gentleman that inquired about that, I mentioned this meeting tonight, so he may give some public comment, I'm not sure, but we'll see when we start the meeting, but he was supportive of this concept when we talked earlier this week. So, really, the bulk of this presentation is to have some discussion with Council and get some feedback, but just some sort of final thoughts before we turn it over to Council for discussion. As we identify potential areas for vending, staff's recommendation is that we want to, you know, pick a specific area in there. So if we're talking the gravel lot, for example, we say, okay, this corner of the lot is specified for vending activities. And based on the 12 by 12 sort of vending unit that's in our code, we could then designate, okay, there's room for, you know, five spots here, or a specific number of spots. Some of the issues that we ran into previously were vendors having conflict with people that were parking, you know, and maybe not patronizing their vending area, but we're just coming to park, you know, on, in the public property. So again, I think one way to potentially alleviate that is to say, you know, make sure that the vending area is well-defined. We also have provisions in our code of conflicts like that arise, and we have a troublesome vendor that we can, you know, we have some actions that we could take. And then, once we have identified an area and a number of spaces, then we would open those up on sort of a first-come, first-served basis to folks that are interested in vending. And then, based on our revised vending code, anyone that is vending would have to have a city business license, they would have to have a city vendor permit, which requires proof of liability insurance to help protect the city, with the exception of farm stands, people that are selling, there's state law that regulates that, if you recall. So if you're selling farm goods or vegetables that you yourself produce, then you have an exemption from, from getting licensing. But you could still, you know, you'd still say, okay, this is the vending spot, even though they don't have to get a permit. So, it's a pretty short and sweet presentation this evening, because really, the goal was to have Council talk and get some feedback, and see if we can zero in on a couple areas to potentially move forward with. So with that, turn it over to Council.
Thoughts, questions?
I was kind of waiting to see what you guys were gonna say.
All right.
And I thought, you know, but...
All right. I think there's, well, this is one of those situations for every pro, there's going to be a con, and vice versa. You know, some of the things that concern me most is probably more of what is being sold, rather than where it's being sold. And not that I'm opposed to anything in particular, but as you said up there, well, right there, it says, we're very limited in the ability to limit what people are selling.
Right.
And how much does the city want to open itself up to dealing with complaints, disagreements, people showing up to protest this, or protest that, or having a opposing viewpoint of some sort in the booth next door? You know, we can't count on people just to get along. And I think, I think that's one of the big concerns that we really have to look at. You know, the, the bridge area historically has always been a really good place to have people show up and sell different goods. And I know Mayor Strobin has some strong opinions about that, and I don't disagree. But then again, it's, what, what type of, not necessarily liability, but what, what type of burden is that going to place on the city when it comes to having to, basically, try and get people to, to get along? And, and I don't know that, I don't know that everybody has that ability. So, I think that's something that needs to be seriously considered. As far as the other locations go, some of the things that I was thinking of was, you know, whether it's this parking lot, I know there's going to be a tenant in the old City Hall building, and there's going to be a tenant downstairs. So I think they should probably have some significant input in that, depending on what their business hours are, and, and things like that. And then the other thing that I think of is, where are people going to park? Our main street's already kind of, kind of crowded. As far as the bridge goes, I think I was probably the one that spearheaded the, the speed limit change, because the mayor drives too fast. But I think that, I, I think that that is, you know, what you always hear, and I'm sure the chief has heard this a million times, is, well, how many people have to die before you do something about the traffic, right? Well, nobody's died, right? We can only find one crash, but it only takes one for it to be that, that big one. I'm not a fan of the, just of the, you know, spending nearly $70,000 to put up barriers and one-way gates and this and, and that. I, I just don't think that's a good use of, of the city's funds for something that, for the most part, isn't, isn't a problem. You know, I, I think it's a good area, and we could paint out the squares where people can sell their, their stuff. And as far as public property goes, for things, for vendors that are not associated with a specific city event, I think that's our top spot. I think that's the one that, that we should consider the most. You know, really, my preference would be somebody that has some private property in town, and be willing to set up something like that, whether it be the big parking lot on the, the west side of the Chips in the Palace, or another empty lot somewhere. There's not many, but there is, there is a couple of them. I think those would be much more appropriate locations. That way, the, the property owner's the one that's responsible for the complaints, the issues, the things like that. They would still have to have the city business license, they would still have to have all of the, you know, food handler's card, whatever it is. They wouldn't be able to skirt any of the issues, where the city would still benefit from it. But the city wouldn't have that burden that they would have if they were, if it was us, as the city, saying, you're allowed to sell your whatevers here, in this little, in this little spot. I just hit this thing twice, sorry. Yeah, I think those are my, my biggest concerns. I want to be supportive of people that want to sell their crafts or their fruits and vegetables. And I just saw on the, on the Facebook the other day, somebody said, hey, whatever happened to the people selling fruits and vegetables down at the?
Yeah.
Bridge? I don't know if they realize that it's May, and there aren't anything growing right now, but it's still, it'll be nice when they, when they come back. So, I'm very supportive of that. It's just when it opens up to other types of, of goods or messages, somebody's going to be mad about it somewhere. And, and then that burden falls on the, on the city. So, that's what I have.
Brian, you mentioned specific designations. Could that include simply food, crafts, and garden?
That's something we could explore with the city attorney. I had that same chain of thought after I asked about the paddle sports, and he's kind of said that, you know, the, the more you sort of specifically exclude many types of uses, but not others, you know, that could potentially be a liability. But, you know, if we're able to say, you know, water sports or water activities here, could we say, you know, farm sort of things here? I'm not sure. So that'd be something that we would have to get a legal opinion on.
My thoughts are, I agree with Casey on a few points, and I'll bring those up. This parking lot here, and just not having enough area to actually have enough vendors to maybe make it worth it, and having parking to manage that, then it's just taking over our main street. And I think that that's, yeah, I think that's adding to that pressure. I like the idea of using the bridge still. I'm not interested in spending a bunch of money on infrastructure right now. So it would have to be something that would be, again, number of, certain number of spots. So again, you're still limiting it. So would it even matter, really, what the categories are so much? Because if you're only going to have five people, well, hopefully, they all lie within something that is reasonable agriculture, you know, fruits, vegetables, and that kind of thing, right? If you only have so many, your probability of having something that's, you know, uninviting potentially is less, right? So, I don't think we're, you have to worry about that too much with that. My other question would be, do we, and this could be a hard no, I have no idea, but if you look at a lot of, like, farmer's markets, especially the ones that are open on weekends and stuff, they're usually near parks. And, you know, where there's, you know, a lot of congestion of people, is there any way we could use the community park, or parts of the downtown parking lot where the high school is, and talk to the high school about using that lower parking lot, and blocking some of that off to set up vendors, like, on one row? And then having enough parking, because I get the Little League games, I understand, like, on Saturdays, we can't be using that, because there's already not enough parking, it seems, right? If they're, all those fields are being used. But maybe they could, you know, use the high school parking lot, and the people could walk down to do some of the vending, you know, I don't know. That's just kind of where my mind's at. It's like, how can we get them more in-town, maybe? And, you know, using, you know, potentially exposing them to our other businesses, but also trying to get adequate parking. But it could probably be a hard no. I could understand, that might be, you know, but that's just...
The way the code's set up, you know, any public property that the city owns, whether it's right-of-way or parks property, you know, could be a designated vending area. The city, actually, that the Paver Lot, as it's known, below the high school there, sort of opposite Holly Park, is a city-owned facility.
Oh, right, right, right. I'm sorry.
So, we could use that. One, I think the main reason we didn't include it in this presentation is for the reason you said of, it's pretty busy there on the weekends. So, you know, we don't want to cause a conflict with, with Little League or park users. But that's certainly, you know, an option, and, and could be, you know, it's something that we could work with, you know, and try and schedule around. And then, to your point, on the school parking lots, you know, we could, we could work with the school potentially, or, or see if there's a, a conversation to be had there.
Right, because I could see Saturdays being the busiest day, obviously, where Sunday, you know, like, if we did, kind of like the Vancouver's farmer's market, they're nine to three, you know, Saturday and Sunday, you know, keep it, you know? And, you know, Saturday might be really hectic, obviously, during baseball season, but once that's over and the summer months continue, then you won't have that, you know? So maybe using the parking lot just for a short term, I don't know. But I just like the idea of getting people through town, and getting them near safe parking, and then that way, we can actually maybe set up some more vendors, and make it kind of worth it to have them available to begin with. You know, pulling off to the side of the road's nice, if you just need a little bit of strawberries, but, and that's okay, but that, that also sets up a lot of cons, that I'm not really, you know, taking all the ways of people that are going there to enjoy the waterways, and the safety, and all of those other things. Whereas that, that's kind of set up more for, you know, already has a lot of that built in. So, that's my two cents.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think, I think Melissa brought up some really good points as well. You know, the other thing that I was thinking is, I, I do think we owe it to the community to look at options for entertainment, and possibly, you know, it's not going to be a huge revenue generator, but it will be something that attracts people to come to the, to the area. So, yeah, I think the, getting the answers to some of those questions about the, the what, and the, and the where, and, and what it would look like with the number of, of, of vending locations within, whether it be at the bridge. And then, the other part, too, is how many, how many public events, city-sponsored events, are we going to be able to, to have throughout the summer? I think that there's some people have some ideas of, of adding some events that, that might attract some, some vendors and things, and give them that opportunity, you know, especially at the, at Holly Park, which is a, a great location. It's not enough parking, but it's pretty good, especially if you add the, the Paver Parking Lot across the street. And if it's full of cars, then it's hard for people to do their burnouts up and down at, at night, too. So, or at, in the afternoon. So, maybe that would help with one of those problems.
Yeah, I neglected to mention this in my presentation, but the code does allow for vending on public property with a city, not city-sponsored necessarily, but a city-approved special event. So, you know, that's another opportunity for these vendors to be able to, to vend on public property. Is there any feedback from the Council on the Pollock Park, and sort of the water-specific vending area down there? Or is that something that we should look at?
I think it sounds awkward. Personally, it just sounds like...
Oh, I like it.
I mean, I like it for specific things, yes. The option, yes, for specific, but not for, like, general goods, yeah, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, that, that's, I mean, it makes sense to have a place like that, you know, that, that's renting watercraft and paddles and life jackets and, and things like that. I think that would be, I think that would be great to have. Being that specialized, though, and in that one location, do, are we required to have a competitive process, or is it first-come, first-served, I think, is a, a big question?
Yeah, so I think in general, they'd be first-come, first-served. So we can take a look at, you know, Pollock Park and see, you know, roughly how many vending spots we could potentially fit there without, you know, we don't want to obviously impact the parking area too much, because other folks are coming down there to use the water. We can also take a look at the bridge area and see, you know, maybe like the, the side edge closest to the bridge, you know, maybe that's the vending area, and see, you know, if it's four, five, or however many vending spots could potentially fit there, you know, and to, to gather some additional information. And then, yeah, we can, I can, we can have an informal conversation, at least with the school district, to see if there's any interest there. And then, sort of lead back with the Council and the mayor, if that works.
Have we approached or informed the residents on Pollock Road?
Uh, no, this is the first conversation that's sort of been in public, other than the phone call with the, the person that was inquiring. So, that would be something that we would want to do, or can, or can do, as, as we continue to explore that area.
I think we'd want to hear from them and, and understand their concerns as well, because it's not, you know, a highly maintained road. So, I'm sure we'll get pros and cons from the residents, and at least we'd know, you know, what the issues were.
Okay.
We can also even do both, have some spots up at the bridge, because there's limited space, and then the lower parking lot, you know, like on Saturday, on the weekends, or something like that, or maybe just an option. Maybe those ones are, maybe you have different bidding for those, I don't know, based on, you know, who's willing to pay for, you know, there's only a few up the bridge, and then some over here, just an idea.
Okay.
I, I think when you talk to the renters of the space downstairs, as well as across the way, if they're amenable to it, it, I think it would be beneficial for the community if we allowed those types of vendors to coincide with the weekend events that we have. So, people can kind of mingle, and, you know, bring more people walking through the area, and visiting the other businesses as well. And just having that mix or combination.
That's all I got.
That's it?
I think so.
Yep.
You too.
All right, well, we appreciate this. We'll do some work, and then we'll be coming back with some additional information here at some point in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. With that, I'd like to close the work session.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. If we could please rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle? Councilmember Servini?
I'm present.
Mayor Strobin?
Here. Thank you, clerk. Clerk, is there any public comments from the audience?
Yes, Joe, you can come on up.
My name's Joe Lachlan. I have just 36017 northeast, north port. I would like to get a vending permit to rent out paddleboards at Pollock Park. And I know you guys are, have some concerns about that, and I'd love to see how we can work through those concerns. As, right now, I'm just starting out, so my model is basically just going to be rent by schedule. So, I don't plan on having lots of people trying to find parking. I only plan to have the people renting at a time trying to find parking. And, yeah, I'd just love to know what, what I can do to make this work.
Thank you, Joe. If you can speak with staff after the meeting, and then you can also speak with councilors after the meeting as well.
Sure.
And they'll, they'll take your advice into consideration. Thank you. Any other public comments, clerk?
Yep, Al, come on up.
Al Villa, 152 West 15th Street. Yeah, hey, the reader board. You know, and us old folks are driving in town at 25 miles per hour, chief. It's still hard for us to see that. So, we could take that and put it on the city website, you know, somehow scroll, scroll it around there or something. You know, that would really help us old folks, so we could see it.
Oh, look at all of them, they're high and stomy.
Okay, now the important stuff. All right. For those of you who don't know, this is Teacher Awareness Week. I want to put a shout out to all those teachers, you know, including my mom, who taught up here for 20-some years. And which brings me to the segue, of course, it's Mother's Day this weekend, so remember your mothers. You know, and, see, now, if any of you were going to say anything about Teacher Awareness Week, or Mother's Day, if you put us back a little bit on the schedule here, you know, you could have beat me to it. But now, I beat you to it. So, yeah. Okay, God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
No other cards for folks in the audience?
Any write-ins?
No write-ins, but we do have two callers on.
Okay. Caller, if you'd give your name and address, and keep your comment to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Oh, star six, please. So unmute yourself.
This is Kimberly Goheen Albin, live citizen of Clark County, Washington. I'm 30 years citizen of La Center, Washington, USA. Hey, I want to let everybody know that I spoke today for the first time at the Portland City Council meeting. It's quite a nice building there. You go on the second floor, it's the old style, just really very nice setting. And, but you can just feel the, the whole world right there, just about. So, I want to say that I did inform the citizens of their ICLI membership, the United Nations membership. And hopefully, people will start waking up to that, and understanding that we need to stand up and assemble against most of our local governments. La Center's a smaller city, however, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we follow the constitutional lens, and not the United Nations, because they're in... because Vancouver is a member of the United Nations and it does affect the other cities. I know that to be true through policymaking. Okay. So with all due respect, as Jesus has me to love, even my enemies or an enemy, not that Mayor Thornton was an enemy of any sort at all, but out of all due respect, I must say that we should not name the building after the last mayor. It is my understanding that when any elected official that follows any United Nations agenda, as has been done in the past year, I definitely wouldn't want to name a building after him. You might consider this good timing. I do not. There is plenty of time to consider with the public, make it a public hearing and so we can have nominations and let's put them in, you know, if people nominate it that way. I I haven't seen any voting or any nominations at all. So again, that is out of all due respect. So thank you. Congratulations for the new mayor. I appreciate that. And I want to say God bless mothers and without the fathers, we wouldn't be mothers. So God bless the fathers also. We want to take care of our families and our country united under God. Thank you very much, and God bless everybody this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. So there's still one more there, clerk?
There's one more caller, but they haven't unmuted yet, so.
Caller, do you have any public comment? Moving on. If there's no request for any items.
Tell them to push the unmute button, sir. I'm sorry, mayor, but you might tell them to push.
Yeah, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. We're good, okay. If there are no requests for items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, I have a move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. We have a few presentations and proclamations tonight. First would be La Center School presentation. Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz will give an update on the La Center Schools.
Excuse me. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I feel like I'm on stage now with Mike. All right, so I just want to take the opportunity to update the city council on different things that are going on. We had a board workshop last night and discussed several items. I'll update you on that. I do want to extend appreciation to Greg Thornton for serving as our mayor for so many years and serving La Center community. I also want to thank Liz Servini for serving as the mayor pro tem in his absence. And then I just want to say congratulations to Tom for being our mayor and moving forward, continuing the good work that's going on here in La Center. Also, Al did beat me to the teacher appreciation. I appreciate that, but you did miss one. Today is Nurses Appreciation Day as well. So, hey, there's appreciation days for everyone. We do our best. So one of the things we talked, we had an extensive conversation about, and as you probably would guess, the topic, reading last night. And one of the things with the work we're doing, we're experiencing significant growth in our elementary school. But remember, the bar was set pretty low when we came out of COVID. There were holes and lots of challenges. I stay on point with reading because without reading, our kids don't have access to the education. And it is an equity issue for me that all kids have access to the education. I can't guarantee an outcome, but I can guarantee access. I'm trying to make sure we all have access. Next on the dock is math. Right, so we just finally did a final adoption on our math. We now have one set of math materials, K5, and another set, six through algebra two. When you get above algebra two, the materials get very specialized and so. But that's really good for parents and kids. They don't have to learn new systems as they go through. That should result in growing more brain cells. Additionally, we have AP course offerings that are expanding at the high school and registrations up. Typically, in the past, we've experienced maybe eight to 10. My daughter graduated here last year. She had a couple of classes, eight kids for AP offerings. It's a lot of staff to spend on a small number of kids. With the expansion of AP opportunities and and some incentives along the way, such as for class rank, your AP weighted GPA will calculate for class rank moving forward. So there's a lot of benefits and kids are like, hey, I I could take that and get college credit for those AP courses, regardless of they go in the trades or go to college, doesn't matter. It gives them more opportunities and opens doors. And finally, our math is cool. We always talk about sports, but math is cool. Our fifth grade and sixth and eighth grade team, sixth and seventh grade team, went to state. So the middle school did a state send off for our math is cool kids. It was pretty cool. Stadium update, plumbing is moving along. We are. I'm hopeful we'll eventually have bathrooms up there. We will, but it is moving faster. New reader board going up there. So we have two new reader boards in the school district to help communicate with our families. And then lighting, safety lighting's up and it it lights up amazing. So folks can actually see their seats and make their way around the stadium. And then finally, I just want to encourage folks in this fast and busy lifestyle we're in right now, just take a moment, slow down, read a book, or go have a conversation with a neighbor because face to face conversation will help us come together as a community. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter. There is a proclamation this evening for Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month, May 2023, whereas our entity type is committed to reorganizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safety construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal official officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, and our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Strobin, mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Building Safety Month and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. Thank you. We have a plaque presentation this this evening. This is for Mayor Gregory Thornton, presented to the mayor. I'm assuming that that will be sent to him. Okay, perfect. Thank you. In recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of La Center, Mayor 2016 through 2023, City Council 2010 through 2015, Planning Commissioner 2007 to 2010, we thank you for your service. All right, mayor's report. La Center United Town Hall meeting will be on Thursday, May 11th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at La Center Elementary School Library Classroom. Spring cleanup and shred day will be on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the La Center High School parking lot. Do we have that on the website by chance? Facebook. Oh, it's on Facebook. Okay, thank you. Mayor's Q and A session will be held at City Hall on Wednesday, June 7th, starting at 6:00 PM. I encourage you all to come down. You can ask me questions. I will try to answer them the best I can. And Clark County is seeking community input about internet service and speeds for an internet access project. Please see Facebook for additional information. So if you have any questions on that, please reach out. I do want to wish all the mothers Happy Mother's Day and of course, the Teachers Appreciation Day, and I do not want to forget the nurses, as Peter pointed out. Thank you, Peter. With that, I will turn it over to our attorney.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about possession of controlled substances and where we stand legally with the legislature closing their session on April 23rd and not adopting any bill on the subject of criminalizing the possession of controlled substances. So in 2021, the Washington Supreme Court in a case called State versus Blake ruled that it was unconstitutional to make the possession of a controlled substance a felony without requiring proof that the person had knowledge that they were possessing the controlled substance. So the case involved a woman who had a coat and there were drugs in the pocket. And she said she had loaned the coat to somebody and she didn't know that there was drugs in the coat and so no knowledge. And Washington is actually the only state that criminalized possession of drugs without a knowledge requirement. And so the Washington Supreme Court said that that exceeded the state's police power and violated due process and it was unconstitutional. So it essentially abolished the crime of possession of a controlled substance. So that left it to the legislature to come up with a new replacement law. And they struggled with that during this last legislative session. And it went right down to the final hours of the session and they couldn't agree on a bill. Some legislators thought that the proposed bill, which made possession a gross misdemeanor, and chief, please jump in anytime here, was too strict. The, there was an interim law which was in effect and isn't in effect, excuse me, until July 1 this year, which makes possession a misdemeanor and requires diversion from prosecution for the first two offenses. But that current law has a sunset provision that it goes out of effect July 1. So what we're set with is the legislature not adopting a replacement or a new law on possession and the current law sunsetting on July 1. So Mayor Inslee has called the special session of the legislature, which is convening on May 16, so next week. And, you know, hopefully, without a whole lot of other bills in front of them, the legislature and the special session can roll up their sleeves and agree on something. But why does this matter to cities? It does because in the event that the legislators don't agree on something, cities can adopt an ordinance criminalizing possession of controlled substance. And a number of cities and counties have already done that. Some have done it and the law only takes effect on July 1 if the state doesn't adopt a bill criminalizing possession of controlled substance. There's a number of templates or samples that we can, if we get to a position where you want to consider adopting something in the event that the legislature hasn't, we'll be in a position to be able to offer you sort of a menu of different ordinances to choose from. So that's where things stand with possession controlled substances in the state of Washington. I am not going to be with you in June. I'm going to be traveling. So have a pleasant June, but I'll see you at the next meeting.
Any questions for the attorney? If they don't come to an agreement, does that mean that they, there is no crime for possession of drugs?
Essentially, yeah. So distribution and manufacturers are still felonies, but possession, if they don't come to an agreement on something, then as of July 1, there won't be a state statute on possession.
Okay.
And if you don't want, can I jump in right behind you here? We did, we are working on a draft for possession, just in case. It, I got, I actually got my draft from Wash U because our goal was trying to get the cities to all, if they're going to do an ordinance that it be standardized throughout the county. So at least you know that when you drive from one city to the other, it's, you know, you're not trying to guess what you can and can't do. I did write our draft. I've sent it over to the the battleground city prosecutor because I wanted their input on whether it should be a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor because I've seen drafts written both ways. So I'm kind of waiting for that input back and I was going to give it to you to look at and then we could get it to council at some point beforehand, just as a safety in case the legislators walk away and can't agree on something. So we don't go with no enforcement or no law. So that's kind of where we are right now.
What's the difference between misdemeanor and gross?
It's got to do with the fine and the in the jail time, that kind of thing. And I wanted to get a because even our, even the samples have diversion processes in them for for our ones that we're proposing. But I want to get the prosecutor's input on diversion, number one, and number two is whether they feel it should be a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor. And then I was actually going to reach out to Casey because he's on the task force. He would know so more. So that's kind of where we are right now. I, my preference is, you know, whatever the prosecutor can prosecute, that's what I'm looking to get because it doesn't make any, there's no reason to write some kind of ordinance asking the prosecutor to do something that at the end of the day, for some reason, they can't do it. So that's kind of where I am right now. So punishment on a misdemeanor is 90 days, $1,000 fine, and gross misdemeanor is one year in jail, maximum $5,000.
Large difference. And we'll have an alternate attorney for the month of June, just in case other questions and such like that come up. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hello, good evening. Happy to be here. Happy to see so many faces. Today I attended a media event with Mr. Mayor Strobin, talking about C Mar coming together with Clark County Fire and Rescue. They're going to start having a program with behavioral health specialists that are going to be going out with paramedics. And so that's a really great resource that they've gotten funding for. And so they're going to start being able to provide more mental health services on calls where that's really necessary. So that's a really exciting thing for our communities. It's getting a lot of buzz. You might see it on the news. But yeah, we had a good day, kind of set the stage for that. Just want to say Happy Mother's Day and Nurses to, my mom is a nurse and so is my sister. So and she's going to be a new mom, so happy to them. And I just want to thank former mayor Greg Thornton for all his service to the community and Liz Servini for her support there. And I just look forward to Tom being here and leading us forward and seeing, you know, what we can do moving forward. So I'm very excited about that. I just want to thank Peter for all your hard work with reading and putting so much effort into the foundation of what makes a school. You know, when 25 or 30% of statistics say that students do not learn to read, they, you know, become a damper on our society in the future. And so, you know, the more that we can provide that and and teach to those students and then the other ones automatically, you know, learn as well, that's, to me, the future of of making sure that we have higher graduation rates and success. of making sure that we have higher graduation rates and success rates and it, it changes the whole trajectory of their lives and it's possible for all of them to learn to read. It is possible. So I'm just excited about that. So thank you and yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Fox, you did a great job thanking everybody, so I won't repeat it. I just want to, I'll echo her sentiments on, on, on those. Why not? It's on. Is that better?
Can you guys hear him?
Can you hear me? Now? Okay. I just said what she said. So, but yeah, seriously, I do, do want to echo her, her thanks. She did a great job mentioning everybody, so I won't, won't repeat that. Bronson, I think you did a very good job of giving an update on the Blake bill that hasn't passed yet. But I think people really need to know what the issue with that Blake fix or the fake Blake fix that, that isn't there, right? So I don't necessarily, I don't disagree with the fact that our law from the very beginning should have said knowingly. It's really the only, the only law that's on the books that, that you don't have to have the means, the motive, the opportunity and the knowledge, the intent to commit that, that crime. And I do think that law enforcement should have to prove that you had an intent to commit the crime of, of possession. However, what it did is it made these aren't my pants a valid defense. And I'm sure the chief has heard it, but I don't know how many times we've found things in people's pockets legally and their response were, they're not my pants. In this case, it was, they're not my coat. The legislator could have, the legislative, the whole, the entire body, they could have fixed this by adding one word into the possession of controlled substance law. They could have added knowingly and that would have fixed it. That would have made possession of controlled substance illegal. Instead, they went to extreme lengths to try and, I'll just tell you a couple of the things that, that King County just released a memo on yesterday, May 9th. The, the Association of Police Chiefs, the Sheriff's Association, the Washington State Narcotics Investigators Association, all released letters, sent to the legislator and said, please, this is our experience. You should do this. Obviously, adding one word to the bill went out the window a long time ago. So the law enforcement groups understand that, that that ship has sailed. That could have been a fix that would have taken care of every problem that's, that's out there. Not every problem, because there are resources that are still needed, but we don't have the funding for that. And unfortunately, most of the state legislative agendas don't provide for funding for these great ideas that everybody has. In, in this letter that, that King County issued yesterday, which was by Michael White, the State Relations Director for, for King County, said that they have reviewed the joint letter from the State Narcotics Association, the Washington Council of Police and Sheriffs, and they're saying that the opioid epidemic affects every community and law enforcement is one of the entities on the front line. That said, law enforcement expertise is just that, law enforcement. They do not have healthcare expertise with firsthand knowledge of harm reduction or evidence-based healthcare practices. So what they're saying is they don't want to have any input by law enforcement. They don't want to know what law enforcement thinks about the opioid epidemic. They simply want to make this a healthcare issue. So some of the things that they want to add into their fix is drug paraphernalia distribution. Both chambers passed their version of the Blake fix with this language in it and they, King County is recommending that the legislature include that in its final version. They say that research shows public health programs distributing syringes, smoking equipment, fentanyl test strips and other items included in the definition of drug paraphernalia serve as an important connection point for people who use drugs. I don't know about you, but I don't want my child being able to go to a public entity run by the state, by the county, by public health and be able to get smoking equipment, syringes and whatnot. Public agency health or, yeah, public health agency drug testing. The legislature clearly agreed and the House unanimously passed House Bill 1006 and the Senate unanimously passed Senate Bill 5022. Both of those bills would allow drug testing by public health agencies. I'm not sure who they have contact with, but in my experience, I've never seen a drug user, a drug addict, someone that truly needs help, being able, willing to go give up some of their product to have it tested. They're not going to do it. They don't want to get rid of that little bit of, of drugs. Not only that, they don't know any of the test strips. It's the same test strips that, that law enforcement uses, right? And all it's going to do is tell you what's in it. It doesn't tell you how much. The issue right now with the counterfeit fentanyl pills, the M30s, the blues, the ones with the lines under the 30, the ones with the lines over the 30, is they're exactly that. They're counterfeit. They're using basically a sausage mixer with all of the powder, all of the binders, all of the, the, the drugs and then running them through a pill press. So you don't know, that pill might be a tenth of a percent fentanyl. The next one next to it might be 10% fentanyl. And so, you know, we hear, we hear people that are, that are using drugs go, oh, you got to get the blues, but you got to get the blues with the line under the 30. Those are the best ones. They're all fake. They're all being made either in Mexico or in different places. There was a, a pill lab up in Snohomish County here not too long ago, where this guy was pumping out in an electric pill press, tens of thousands of pills a day. So that test isn't going to tell anybody whether it's a, a safe and healthy amount of, of narcotics to ingest or a synthetic opioid to ingest. It's just going to tell you whether it's, has the presence or not. Anyway, there's a lot of other things that are, that are issues with these, with these bills. And these are our state legislators that are putting this stuff together. They think they know what we want in our part of the state. King County is running the state. Everything that goes through that area is, is being implemented statewide. So we have to get ahold of our legislators. We have to tell them what we think about it. There needs to be funding for treatment. Yes, absolutely. There needs to be resources for, for people that are, that are homeless and are on the street and can't get over their addiction. There, there needs to be those resources out there, but yet again, there has to be some consequences for people's behavior and they're taking that, they're taking that away. In my opinion, this is my opinion, not the city of La Center's, but this is the absolute best free advertising for the drug cartels that you could ever imagine. They are making it a free run of being able to sell. I mean, then they're, they're, they're going to have an automatic defense. There was like, yeah, we sold it, but hey, it's legal. It's not illegal to possess it. So, you know, drug distribution is a billion dollar industry and it's a very, very difficult to, to combat that when the end user doesn't ever have any, any consequences for using those, those things. So I would encourage you, everybody in here, I would encourage you to tell your friends, to tell your family members, to post it on Facebook, to read what this stuff actually says and urge the legislator during the special session to put some sort of consequence out there, whether it's, it's the, the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor. You know, we, we have a process in place already that allows you, a, a person to be contacted twice and receive diversion. We have, law enforcement has to give them a, a list of resources to go out and try and find help and then, you know, maybe on the third attempt, they'll, they'll face some consequences. But it, in, in reality, law enforcement doesn't want to just go out and hammer the, the people that are addicted, that are having a lot of problems. They're trying to get their way back up to the dealers that are, that are selling these, these large amounts who are making more money than all of us in here combined. So anyway, very long and drawn out council member comment. I apologize for that, but I do think it's very, very important. And if our legislator don't hear from us, they're not going to do anything different. They're going to continue onto their own path and you see what Portland looks like, you see what Seattle looks like. You know, you can't put a new muffler on your car, but you can live under a bridge and throw your garbage all over the place. And a lot of times you can offer all kinds of help and people will not accept it. So there has to be consequences on some of these things. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Case. That was, yeah, that was, that was very informative and great and I think we're all on the same page with you there. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming, all that good stuff. I don't have a whole lot tonight. I just want to say, you know, congratulations to our new mayor here. I'm excited for everything that's to come. I know he's really taken a headfirst dive into all of this and I think he's prepared to step up to the challenge and we definitely have our fair amount of those in front of us and just looking forward to working together as a council and a community to try and, you know, make some headway on some of the things that we feel are important and need to happen in our community. Other than that, I, a couple of weeks ago, I went to a CTRAN Board of Directors meeting. They were just working on their 2030 plan to see what kind of services they could offer in the future. And as a representative of La Center, I, you know, put my input in as far as just getting more access to public transportation from within the city, you know, to the major stops and whatnot. They did want to, I need to get, talk to the school district about, they wanted to get in touch with them to set up a program to be able to, because they have a free program for students to be able to use their services. So I wanted to try and get more ridership through the school district. We had a meeting with the Calhoun's Tribe last week and I think just to kind of reacquaint and help strengthen that relationship. And I feel like good things are going to be coming in that direction as well. And yeah, other than that, I'm looking forward to summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Servin.
Thank you. I would like to recognize and thank Don Sol this evening for agreeing to meet with me first of all, and with Brian and discuss the House and for actually taking action and, and getting things taken care of. I appreciate that and I know the community appreciates your efforts and we hope we can continue to help you with the situation you're in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is staff reports. Mr. Brian Cast will present the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So on the public works side, it is mowing season with the sun shining. So our crews have been out starting to mow the areas that are dry enough to mow, both in parks and along roadways. They've also started doing some pressure washing and cleaning up of some of our park features, bleachers, playgrounds, et cetera. On the streets and facility side, we've actually started as of last month, doing janitorial service in-house again. That was something that was outsourced during COVID and part of the discussion on hiring the supervisor in this year's budget was that we were going to take, bring those services back in-house to save some funds that we could then dedicate it to that position. So that has moved forward as planned. Let's see here, we also have two new public work staff that have joined the team here. We have a new full-time staff member, Zach Messner, and a new seasonal employee, Andrew, hopefully I pronounced this right, Yella Vetski. So we're excited to have them join us and work with the crew. On wastewater, one of our public work staff has moved over to the wastewater side, Emery Oldman. So we will be backfilling his position on the public work site as well, but he is now working as an operator in training over at the wastewater treatment plant and learning how the ins and outs of wastewater treatment from our supervisor Jay over there. Jay has also finished the test period for running the bio solids press, which previously was ran five days a week, Monday through Friday. We've switched, lowered that down to four days a week and that's worked out well. So we've made that a permanent change. We're now exploring to see if we can tighten it up even further to three days a week. That saves us significant amounts of energy because there's a, a gas dryer that is used to dry those out and then it also saves electricity and polymer as well. So significant cost savings there and applaud Jay for looking at how to lean up that operation. We also wanted to note that the wastewater treatment plant received the Outstanding Performance Award for 2022. That's an award that we have received for the past several years. So thank you to Bill, to Jeff and to Jay for all their hard work down there at the plant, staying in compliance and giving us this award. On the admin side, we had been, historically have run the wastewater crew on a 410 schedule, although we switched to a 58 schedule, sort of in the interim period as we were addressing our staffing concerns. Now that we have a full crew down there again, we have switched back to the 410s. So we have, still have full five-day-a-week coverage, but we have, you know, some folks are off Mondays, some folks are off Fridays. So back to sort of standard operation there. Finally, on the wastewater side, we have finally finished the last bit of the membrane replacement project that we did last summer and we have scrapped the stainless steel shells of those membranes and brought in just over $3,000 back to the budget for that scrap material. So good news there. They also, we've been doing some cleanup around the, the plant and have recycled a number of plastic drums that were hanging out sort of back behind the fence to just clean everything up and, and free up some space down there. Over on the engineering side, the kitchen remodel at the community center is moving along. We have a date for the hood to come in, which is one of the last major pieces of equipment. That's going to be in early June and mid-June. We have a scheduled date to get that hood installed. So at this point, our hope is that towards the end of June, that that project is winding down and we can start using that building again, which will be exciting. Building Department side to date, since the beginning of the year, we've processed 145 building permits and that includes 59 single-family residents. So seeing a pretty significant uptick from what we saw last year and sort of trending back to the 2021 levels. On community development side, number one on the map, if we scroll down there, Lockwood Creek, we have engineering plans in review for that project. Similarly, on Ace's View, number 37 and Valley View, number 44, also engineering plans are under review. So significant amount of work going on over there on the east side of town. Highland Terrace, number 46, Final Platte was approved about a month and a half ago and right after that, some sinkhole issues appeared in the roadway network there. So we do have a two-year maintenance bond. The first one that opened up, the contractor came, went out and fixed it and then just right next to it, it's had some other issues open up. So some settlement there. From what we understand, it's a trench backfill issue, so we're working with them to resolve that issue and hopefully it's an isolated incident. But if not, we have that two-year maintenance bond and we'll continue to keep a close eye on that over the next two years and have them come out as many times as necessary to get it right.
Hey, Brian.
Yes.
One thing I wanted to kind of, I've noticed with now that, what's the One thing I wanted to kind of, I've noticed with now that, what's the north-south street there, right at Boland, the corner of Boland and at the right of the, right above the 46?
Oh, yeah, I can't quite read that, but.
14th Avenue, whatever it is, it cuts down to Pacific Highway.
Yes.
It's like a direct shot. I've just noticed traveling back and forth through there, it's become the new cut across for people getting out of town. And I, I mean, there's not really much occupancy in there right now, but people are cruising through there pretty quickly. It's like a bypass, which I don't blame them for using it. But I think at some point, we might have to address that.
All right, I'll take a note of that. Last item I wanted to mention on the project list here is that we have completed processing our first home occupation permit since we updated that code. And we have a new massage therapy, number 60 on the map here, rejuvenate LLC. So happy that that process in place and we've streamlined the ability to get home businesses up and running here in the city. So with that, happy to answer any other questions or comments.
How, do you know any, this wasn't on anything you reported, but do you have any updates on what Troy has going on at the Public Works building?
I don't. I will reach out to him because I've been getting questions sort of on what their plan is over there. So I will reach out and see if we can circulate some information on where they're at as far as the remodel over there.
Yeah, cool. I was just curious.
I don't know if I should file with the complaint department or what, but at Holly Park, I just noticed parking is kind of, you know, there's always a lot going on there, tons of cars and stuff. And I noticed that we are kind of storing some landscaping material in some of the parking spots, bark dust and sand and whatnot. And I just didn't know if there was someplace else, another piece of property in the city that we're not using that could possibly be a little bit more convenient, just as parking can be pretty tight in there.
Sure.
Even on the busy, busy days, the.
The what?
Yeah, the paper lot, that one. It gets filled up as well. So.
Right. Yeah, that's something that we can take a look at. I think sometimes they'll have material delivered there to distribute in the park, but that should turn over pretty quickly and open it back up. So if there's, you know, excess material there, we can see if there's another spot that we might be able to store that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cast?
Yeah, I do have one. I noticed the other day, coming down Stone Creek Drive, there's some bubbles in the, in the pavement. And I know they just did a, a project there. What, what's the, do we know what is causing that or what the plan is for?
Yeah. So I actually was talking to the city engineer about that the other day. So from what he told me, coming, there's a storm line, I think it is, that comes down the road there. And we had a suggestion when that storm line went in to put it in some bentonite, which is a clay, basically dams to stop groundwater from following that trench line. That was sort of a new thing that we'd heard about it, you know, other jurisdictions would use it, but we hadn't done it in the city here. And apparently that bentonite likes to swell when it gets wet. So it has swelled. They've actually, if you probably noticed, there was a patch there where that sort of bubble is. So they've actually gone out there and addressed that once, and then it's continued to swell. So, you know, it's, they actually, from what Tony was telling me, they, when they did that first repair, they dug down to the pipe and removed all the material that they could really access. Yet it's, the problem sort of reared itself up again. So I'm thinking that a follow-up repair there. And hopefully, we've reached the end of the swelling stage of that material. But definitely look at doing a different technique in the future to try and stop groundwater migrating along trench lines.
Thank you for being on top of it. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right. Ms. Maria Swinger Inskeep will present ordinance 2023-07, collection of user charges.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So currently, this section in our code states that any unpaid balance for the sewer service charges from a previous owner would be inherited by the new owner of the property. This is not our current practice of processing unpaid balances for sewer service charges. Currently, when an account is 60 days past due, we make every effort to contact the occupant to make payment arrangements. And then after several attempts and failures to make payments, a delinquency notice and intent to lien is sent to the occupant and owner. If they are not one and the same, if it's a renter, we'll make sure that the owner is aware. If the customer fails to pay within 90 days and no payment agreement has been reached, the city sends notice to the occupant and the recorded, recorded owner, if applicable, that a lien will be filed. And then the city continues on a regular basis to collect the past due amounts. A lien is only removed once a customer has brought their account balance to zero and paid the recording of fees that are assessed by the Clark County Auditor's Office. And then in the event that a home is for sale and a lien is currently placed on that home, the city receives the monies that are delinquent from the sale of the home. And the lien is removed and the account is brought back to zero. And in most cases, the title company sends us a check for those fees and the outstanding sewer and/or stormwater balances. And then when a new homeowner is in place, we start the new account specific to them with a zero balance. We don't transfer any lien fees to them or any unpaid sewer balances to the new homeowner as we have collected those monies from the sale of the home. And if, if a home is sold and there are unpaid balances, for instance, if it was under 60 days past due and the title company has not reached out to us, because they don't always reach out to us, sometimes that's not included in the sale of the home, we still try to collect. If we're successful, we do utilize a collection company. And so for some of those smaller balances, we, we do send things on occasion to a collection company. And so I give all of that background just to say that we are looking to update our code with what our current practice is. And it is working well for the city to follow this, this practice. Are there any questions?
I guess I'm kind of confused because you say that the new homeowner isn't paying for it, but ultimately they are with the sale? Or are you talking about that that's an agreement with the buyer and the seller, they have to deal with that, you mean?
No. So the old homeowner, when they sell, or the, yeah, the current, the current person who's selling, it comes out of their fees.
Got it. So you just work with them to make sure that they understand that when they, I see.
Yes. And we work with the title company on a regular basis.
Okay, okay. I see what you're saying. No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-07.
Excuse me, Council. We, we actually have to open this up to a public hearing.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
I appreciate that, though.
Forgive me.
So if there's any other questions for Maria, I would like to open up a public hearing at, what is that, 7:24? Oh, the big red clock. So sorry. 7:24. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience? Any comments from those calling in? Press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Nothing. Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
None to be read.
I'll leave it open for one more minute just to make sure.
It's your chance, Al.
The longest minute ever, right? All right. Seeing as there is no other comments, I would like to close the public hearing at this time, 7:26 PM. Is there any comments from Council? Nope.
Now I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-07 by removing 13.100804, collection of user charges.
Second. All right. It's been moved in second to approve motion ordinance 2023-07, collection of user charges. Clerk, this is an ordinance. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Servant?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Chief Richardson will present resolution 2023-470, surplus property vehicles. Did I get that one wrong?
No, no, we just were debating whether or not you wanted me to read the whole thing or not. We decided, no, we didn't want it like that. So, so thank you, Mayor, Council, and community members. This is a resolution 470, and this is authorizing us to surplus two pieces of equipment. There are actually two police vehicles. And we've been working with the city of Ridgefield and agreed on a price of, for a total of $50,000 for both vehicles, including their contents. In order to get to that number, we got, we surveyed the wireworks, which is one of the companies that does installs of the equipment. And they also lease vehicles back to police departments. They gave us an estimate. We looked online. And then the chief and I went through them individually and inventoried them and looked at the equipment. And also Ridgefield took the cars to the mechanic. And the mechanic gave some opinion on, especially the 2018 one, it needed some work. And even if we, for the price, they're still going to have to take the graphics off of them and decide whether or not they're going to need to be repainted or not. But I feel it's better to get some money from them as, as opposed to them sitting there depreciating, falling apart. And I think we would be happy with the money. And I think Ridgefield would be happy with the cars.
So before we go into comments on that, I do want to add to Chief Richardson's presentation there that, you know, before we would get eight, $10,000 for a police car, and at this point, we're going to be looking at 50,000 for two. These cars are older, mileage is a little bit higher. I, I think it's a good deal. I know that chief brought it up. So I, I have to agree with it at this present time, that we actually get as much money as we can out of cars. I just, sorry, I didn't mean to add on to that, but I wanted to make sure that people understood where we were at before and where we're going with things.
I would throw in too, that, yeah, the, the auction price for a used police car is probably 8,000. But that's, doesn't include what it costs to strip them down to remove all of the, the police equipment. Where here, we're getting 50,000 for something that we don't have to touch. We just hand over the keys and they come get it. Normally, what has to happen, and I know that the county shops usually charges the county anywhere from two to $6,000 to, to strip a vehicle, which ultimately, in this case, would mean we would end up with maybe $2,000 for Tahoe. So.
So at this point, I'll go ahead and open it back up. Questions for the chief or any comment or council comments as well?
Good job negotiating.
Thank you.
So. Any more, any more comments, questions? No, nice job. All right. Can I get a motion for resolution 23-470?
Make a motion to approve resolution 23-470, surplus property vehicles.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Motion passes. Thank you, Council.
Can we say all in favor, say aye?
All in favor, record? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. All right. That brings us to resolution 23-472, building naming. Mr. Brian Cast will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a little background on this, on our first staff meeting on the second of this month, new mayor Strobin suggested that we consider naming a park or a facility in honor of Mayor Thornton's service to the community. We considered a couple of different options, but after discussion with Mayor Thornton, we settled on this building here to be named after Mr. Mayor Thornton and in his honor. As you all know, this building was really his vision. He helped, he found this building, acquired it, found state funding for the renovation, and then the renovation was completed under his tenure here. So, you know, really, the, the building that we're here, all here and enjoying this evening was, was his vision and he made it happen. So we feel that it's an appropriate tribute to him. While we do have an established naming policy for parks, we do not have an established policy for other things like a building. So talked with the city attorney and agreed that a resolution was the proper mechanism for this action. So that is what you have before you this evening. Assuming the resolution passes, staff will order and install a brass plaque at the entrance to the building to, to let every, it be known to all that come in here that this is the Gregory L. Thornton Municipal Building. So with that, happy to answer any questions before Council considers this resolution.
Any questions? All right. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 472?
I move to approve resolution 472, naming the City Hall Building as the Gregory, Gregory L. Thornton Municipal Building as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second. Can I get an all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, Council. And I would like to say thank you to Mr. Thornton for what he has done with the community. There are always differences in people's opinions and decisions made for every administration. Each of us will have challenges that others won't disagree with, and then we'll have challenges that others agree with. But it's important that we recognize people for what they did in the community. Thank you. Let's move on to unfinished business. Council, is there any unfinished business? All right. Do we have any new business on the agenda this evening? We do. All right. I'm following some of the wording on here, right, to help me out. Just so you guys all know, it's like a sing-along book.
Color bouncing.
Right. Okay. So we have the appointment of Mayor Protem. And I want to read a letter that I received in my stack of paperwork here. Here you go. Thank you. Oh, yeah. All right. I'm still new at this. So. Mayor Tom Strobin and Council, this is dated May 10, 2023. It has truly been an honor to serve the community in the role of Mayor Protem, welcoming our new businesses, interacting with fellow city mayors, representing the city at AWC, the state legislator, our legislature, and elected officials at various levels, and meeting with potential developers to tell our story. Fills me with great excitement for the future of the city of La Center. While each aspect takes far longer than any of us, or any one of us would ever imagine, the pieces are indeed finally beginning to take shape and fall into place. The Council and I are working very hard to bring greater business development, diversity, and safety to residents and businesses in the city. and safety to residents and businesses in the city. This remains our highest priority, and we are united in seeing each aspect through to completion. I see this as a great opportunity to provide someone else on the City Council to serve in the role of Mayor Pro Tem. Supporting Mayor Strobin in our mission, I will continue to represent the community of List Center and fulfill the duties as your Councilmember in position number five. Sincerely, Liz Servini, Councilmember, position number five. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Bronson. So Bronson, do you want to speak on the appointment of a Mayor Pro Tem?
I can. So there's a state statute, it's RCW thirty-five-A twelve-oh-six-five, and it provides that, um, it is the Council who designates the Mayor Pro Tem. And that can be done at your first meeting of the year or periodically. And so this would fall into the category of periodically, so, but it's the Council's function and authority to, to make the appointment or designation is the, the word used by the statute.
Any questions to that? You've been through it through these, right?
I'm all familiar with it.
So, so at this point, this is where you guys get to appoint or nominate someone for Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
I would like to nominate or make a motion to, um, have Councilmember Casey Casper serve as Mayor Pro Tem.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved in second. Can I get, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council.
And Casey accepts?
Oh, yeah. We're done.
You don't have an option.
Sounds like it's already been decided, yes.
We decided for you.
I already signed the paperwork.
Thank you, I do appreciate the confidence. I'd be honored to take the position.
Thank you, Casey, or Councilmember Casper.
And thank you, Liz, for your service in filling that role. I think that you did a great job while, uh, Mayor Thornton was out, and we appreciate what you did.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
All right. Next up is Council vacancy. Ms. Maria Swinger Inskeep will go over the process to fill a council vacancy.
All right, so with the appointment of Councilmember Strobin to Mayor, that has left a vacant council seat as he has resigned from Councilmember position four, the process for filling the vacancy and options the Council has moving forward are presented in RCW forty-two-point-twelve-point-zero-seven-zero. And it provides that the remaining Councilmembers shall appoint a person to fill the vacant position within ninety days of the occurrence of the vacancy. And the following are three scenarios for dealing with the vacancy. So first, you can take the full ninety days, and in this scenario, if the Council takes the full ninety days to make the appointment, uh, ninety days from April twenty-six would be July twenty-fifth. Secondly, you can make the appointment quicker. According to our process to fill documentation, we would advertise, or we could advertise the next two weeks in the paper, and applications would be due on June fourth, and then Council would then review the applicants and interview the, uh, candidates on June fourteenth. We do have that three weeks between those council meetings, so that's why it's a little longer. And the third option would be to not make the appointment, and if Council does not make an appointment within ninety days, the authority to make an appointment, uh, shifts to Clark County Council. Uh, the County Council would then have up to an additional ninety days to make an appointment, and again, ninety days from April twenty-six is July twenty-fifth. So if Council decides to appoint a person to feel, to fill the position for vacancy, the term of that position appointed would end once the election is certified, which as we have discussed is November twenty-eighth. If the person is, runs and is elected to, to fill that position, then of course, they would continue in that role. And the alternative, the Council could not make an appointment, in which case on July twenty-fifth, uh, the authority to make the appointment would shift to the County Council. Uh, the Council should discuss the options set forth before you and provide direction to staff as to whether or not it should proceed with advertising the vacancy and the process for applying to be appointed to the Council. A motion either to proceed or not proceed with the appointment process at this time would be the ideal method of providing that direction. Are there any questions?
No, I would like to make a motion to proceed with the appointment process by advertising for the position, that way we can make the selection rather than going to the County Council.
Okay.
I second that.
Yeah.
We have a motion approved and our, that's a motion made in second. Can I get, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council.
Um, I have a question from Bronson about this. Can we, um, I don't know how to say it, uh, encourage applicants to reach out to Councilmembers prior to the appointment, or is that something that needs to all be done publicly or?
To, for applicants to reach out to Councilmembers?
Yes, yeah, just to.
Um, you, you can do that. You know, there is the interview process that's done in open session.
Yeah.
But if, uh, people have questions about, well, what's it like to be on Council and that kind of thing, there's no reason that you can't engage with people who are interested.
Okay.
Answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we adjourn, I apologize, I, uh, neglected to mention something in my staff report. So, um, staff have, uh, prepared some bid documents to bid at Chip Seal of Highland and, uh, three-thirty-ninth along the high school. Our current purchasing policy requires that we get Council authorization before we advertise that project to bid. Uh, we'd like to advertise it here, um, coming up in the next week so that we can get, uh, on the Chip Sealer's schedule. So, um, if it's appropriate, I'd like to request, uh, authorization to proceed with that bid.
Is there any numbers that need to be read on that, or you were going to say something, Bronson?
No, no, just go ahead and do a motion to authorize.
Yeah, can I get a motion to authorize?
Do we, is there any, this is just to get bids?
That's correct, so we will, so our purchasing policy requires any project that has an estimate of over fifty thousand dollars to have Council authorization. Uh, engineer's estimate on this is, I think it was eighty-six thousand dollars. So as we receive those bids, we'll then come back to Council for a ward of that, um, with the actual bid amounts.
Cool.
It would be to authorize.
I make a motion to authorize the Chip Seal project.
Thank you. I guess we need a second.
Second, so all those in favor?
I couldn't.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, could I please do one more appreciation? This is also Public Service Appreciation Week, and so I just wanted to thank all of the city staff and, uh, everybody who gives of their time and energy and the volunteers who, uh, contribute to city events and things like that and non-city events. So just want to recognize and the Councilmembers and Mayor, uh, for the time, the energy that you guys put out, you're not paid completely for all the work that you do. So thank you so much, and thank you to the staff.
Thank you, Maria.
Yes.
Appreciate it. All right. I guess that brings us to adjournment. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, Council.